If you're ready? Ready? All right, welcome Woodbury to your village board meeting of November 14, 2024. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence?
Maybe.
For Daryl Vasquez, the young New York State Parks and Recreation aide killed battling the fires raging in Greenwood Lake. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. All right, as I always do, I will begin by introducing your village board of trustees, starting at the far end with trustee James Fryban. Next to him is trustee Matt Fabro. Next to him is trustee Susan Suriello. Next to her is deputy mayor rubber stamp Vic Ferrelli. Next to him is the village clerk Jessica McLennan. And I am your mayor Andrew Jackamaza. So we're going to start by, with the public hearing introductory local law eight of 2024, sewer moratorium. Public hearing is being held to entertain public comments on introductory local law eight of 2024 to enact a moratorium on sewer connections to the Orange County Sewer District One. The public notice was printed in the Times-Herold Record on October 17, 2024. The village received the 239 review from the county on November 4, 2024 with two required modifications. First are the projects for which the planning board circulated a draft environmental impact statement, and second, the applications to the ARB for a change in use. Now, I will let everybody know that because the local law, we had some minor modifications with it based on comments from our engineering firm. So we will not be taking action on this, but I will keep the public hearing opened. So as of right now, let me start with the first row. Anybody on the first row wanting to go up?
Just one quick thing. The board did receive a supplemental and superseding county reply, county GML 239, and that was dated November 12, and that did modify the required modifications by the county. So they now say that the village should expand the exemptions to the imposed moratorium to exempt the Woodbury Common Phase Five project for which the planning board circulated a DSEIS. And then required modification two was applications to the ARB for a change in use for Woodbury Common should also be exempt from the proposed moratorium. What this did was it further clarified their initial GML report, making it less broad, and their request was to exempt Woodbury Common. I just wanted to note the supplement, it's labeled supplemental and superseding county reply.
All righty, going out to the public. Row one. Introduce yourself, you know the routine.
I certainly do.
Yes, you do.
This is on. Good evening, everybody. My name is Stephen Barshav, S. Barshav Law, P. L. L. C., and I'm here tonight to represent Joseph Templar, the developer of Woodbury Villas. I'm sure you all know the development. Please forgive me, this is going to take a few minutes. This is not a short, two-minute general comment because there are some very important technical matters that I want to bring to your attention. You have very, very, very important decisions to make. I can't emphasize strongly enough that the decisions that you make will determine whether there will be litigation or not. And I don't want to bring litigation. It's not why I'm here. I'm here to lay out a path for you that will show how there will not be litigation. That's the main purpose. But in order for me to do that, I have to explain to you why there would be litigation if certain actions are taken. So let's put this into context first. A little bit of background about Woodbury Villas, you all know it's there, but you may not have some of the basic facts about it. So just a few things. This was approved in 2006. This is a fully approved subdivision. All subdivision approvals have been granted. Why is that important? Because one of the basic things that I will be discussing with you tonight is the concept of vested rights. When a property owner gets approval for a land use development and has spent money in reliance on it, that property owner has constitutionally protected property rights. So if you turn around and you basically say, oh, you've got all your approvals, oh, you spent money in reliance on those approvals, sorry, you can't build, you can't do this, you can't do that. Property owner has rights. What are those rights? We can talk about that and so forth. But that's the basic premise for why it is that I'm here today. I'm here today because it's not just theoretical rights. This is a seven-phase subdivision, the last phase of which just had, within the last few months, completed, or not completed, but almost completed, four and a half million dollars' worth of infrastructure improvements. We're talking sewer lines, water lines, electric, the kind of stuff that makes a subdivision go. Those, that is the most recent reliance. I am not going to bore you with the millions and millions and millions of dollars that were spent over the years to get to this point. That's just the most recent reliance. Why focus on that? Because I'm focusing on the subdivision that has not yet been built. One could turn around and say, well, that part of the subdivision, your client hasn't built yet. Okay, I understand that, but the approvals are all there, and the dollars have been spent in reliance on those approvals for the very infrastructure improvements that your moratorium would say, sorry, you can't use for two years to begin with, but we don't know really how long that's going to be. Now, once you understand the concept of vested rights and that it's constitutionally protected and the expenditure of monies have been made, let's turn around and take a look at what your proposed moratorium calls for. So it basically says to my client, I'll take it almost right out of Monopoly, stop, do not pass go, don't collect $200, that's it. Meaning that unless you have, even in an approved development, unless you have a unit under construction, that's it. There's no grandfather in here for things that have been approved, infrastructure that has been put in, you are stuck. What about the people who bought homes? Or bought lots, I should say. Bought lots with the idea that they were going to build a home. Too bad. You haven't started to build, you're in trouble. Those people also have rights. My client has rights to properties in various phases of the subdivision. My client is not going to be able to build on those unless construction has begun. You may change the date. It was as of today, if it was adopted today. So if you adopt the moratorium as you have it currently drafted, it'll be next week or two weeks, whenever you adopt. Same, same concept, okay? That creates a very, very serious problem for my client. We're talking about millions of dollars that are at issue. Now, most moratoria have a grandfather clause. If you've been approved, I think your water moratorium has it. Most moratoria have that. So the question is, why does this one not? I don't know the answer to that. I'm saying to you, please, please put in a grandfather clause. Please don't make my client sue you. It's as simple as that. You put in a grandfather clause, we have an approved project, those approvals are grandfathered in, we're okay. Well, the logical response to that is, but Mr. Barshav, we would love to grandfather your client, but we don't have any extra capacity. So what are we going to do? Okay, here is the issue, and I have no easy answer for this, but I certainly want to raise the question. My understanding is it's not that the village board went out there or the planning board went out there and just approved projects willy-nilly and gave away sewer capacity. My understanding is that there was sewer capacity that was not being, or sewage usage that was not being measured, that there were lines that were not being metered, and the village didn't know, and Orange County Sewer District Number One didn't know how much flow was going through those lines. At some point, I don't know exactly when, relatively recently, apparently, those things were metered, they were tested, and all of a sudden, voila, it was found out, oh my gosh, we're sending a capacity through that line more than what is counted, more than what you have contracted for. My understanding also is, is that you're not part of Orange County Sewer District One, you're an outside user. So you get a certain amount of usage based on your contract. Okay, I get it. However, Orange County Sewer District Number One has not put an off switch on and said, no, no more stuff can come in. It's not that they're operating over capacity, they have capacity. It's that you haven't been able to contract for it. Well, if there's a problem here, and I'm going to say this very clearly, I don't know whose fault it is. I don't know if it's your fault, I don't know if it's the county's fault, I only know one thing, it isn't my client's fault. My client did nothing wrong. My client was given approvals and put in infrastructure based on the promise that it had sewer capacity that it could use. Now, somebody didn't measure, now the facts have changed, so who is it that has to remedy that problem? This board and Orange County. Go figure it out. Figure out what you got to do in order for there to be more capacity available to the village. How do I know for certain, without doubt, that there is capacity available? You know it today. You've got the Orange County 239 review. What did the 239 review say? And for those that are not familiar with this, a 239 review is when Orange County turns around and says, oh, municipality is proposing something, here are the matters of local concern, here are the matters of county concern, we're going to identify them for you, and we're going to tell you what it is you should do. But what has the Orange County said? Grandfather in, not a project that's already been approved, grandfather in a project that is proposed to be approved. What project is that? That project is the expansion of Woodbury Commons. I have nothing against Woodbury Commons. I represent developers all the time. I love to see development. However, when the county says grandfather in a project that has not used the sewage capacity, it is telling you there is sewage capacity available, because it's not pumping that capacity, and now they're telling you there's over 38,000 gallons of sewage capacity per day that they want to reserve for that project that has not been approved. My point, I don't care about Woodbury Commons in the sense that I have nothing against the project, but I'll tell you one thing, they cannot get priority over my client. My client has an approved subdivision, expended money in reliance on that, and no, there can't be an agreement to give away capacity that should go to my client and give it to a project that has not been approved. That's not right, it's not legal, but it's really more even than it's not legal, it's not right, it's not fair. You don't turn around and say, we would love to have Woodbury Commons because it generates all of this tax revenue, hey, I'm all in favor of that. It'd be great to not burden residential taxpayers with property taxes. This is all good, but not at the expense of a developer who's followed the rules, played by the rules of the game, done what he was supposed to do, put in infrastructure, doesn't have violations, hasn't screwed around with things, done things the right way, and this is what ends up happening. Now, when I look at all of that, and I looked at the moratorium, I looked at the 239 review, I said to myself, wait a minute, let's dive into this just a little bit. So I looked at the 239, and the 239 says, and I want to read it to you because it's actually quite remarkable what is said in here. Sometimes you can't believe what you read. So when I looked at this, here's the exact language. The 239 review says that the department, this county department, has reviewed the Woodbury Commons draft environmental impact statement, which included improvements, et cetera. We found the applicant identified potentially large environmental impacts, and the applicant proposed mitigation measures to ensure that the proposed action would not have significant adverse environmental impacts. Okay, and so on the basis of that, they say the village should expand the exemptions in the proposed moratorium to exempt the Woodbury Commons Phase Five. So I looked, I looked in the draft environmental impact statement, and I said, gee, I wonder what these mitigation measures are. I put in the word sewer, I put in the word sewage, find in the document, and I found every place where sewage or sewer was mentioned. I found one place where they discussed mitigation measures. When I tell you what these mitigation measures are, you will laugh. It says mitigation measures, that's the heading. This is on page 17, anybody who wants to check my references. It says, the following are the mitigation measures. They're going to install energy star, energy-saving features, okay, that's mitigation for your energy usage. Then it says, water-saving plumbing fixtures will be implemented to reduce total consumption and reduce wastewater generated. That is it. But we're not going to have the toilets that are wasteful. Really? Okay, thank you. That's what the county is relying on, to say that they've mitigated their environmental impacts, and therefore this should be justified? I could quote Don Rickles and say, horse buck, whatever words he would use. It's just absolutely ridiculous. It really is. The county wants this to be preserved, exempted, whatever. I understand taxes, maybe politics, I have no idea. All I know is if you do that, and you go along with that, and my, and the moratorium is written as it is, this is what will happen, you will force a lawsuit. There's no other way of putting it. I want to make this very clear, I do not want to sue this village, but if forced to, I'll sue the village and the county, and I'll say the two of you, pax on both your houses, because you're both wrong. So my comment to you today is, please exempt my client. Not a hardship, not to do it a hardship because, oh my gosh, no, he's entitled. Not as a hardship, he's entitled. His rights are vested. If you have vested rights, you shouldn't have to demonstrate hardship. There may be others that should be getting a hardship exemption, and by the way, I do think you should consider carefully, not for my client, but just generally, that there should be a hardship exemption in there, the way you do it with water. And why? Because the Orange County Sewer Treatment Plant does have capacity. May not be allocated to you, but it's there, and you got to work this out with Orange County. Those are my comments. Questions, thoughts, needs, wants, desires? Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else in row one? Row one, that would be you, yes. Go to the podium, introduce yourself.
Okay. Good evening, my name is Libra Bank. I was here some time ago, put in an application for, to get approved for property I have in Highland Mills that I am claiming hardship. I did submit a request. It's funny. And so I have nothing prepared, so I'm not prepared in what I'm going to speak to you about, except the matter is having property for 20 some odd years, paying taxes, and I would like to be considered exempt from the moratorium so that I could build. And, you know, someone I have spoken with a builder, so I do have plans to put in a, I don't know if this is the time to discuss it, but it's like a four-bedroom, single family, I know that's what it's zoned for, R1A. I spoke with Jennifer, and there is an email to be sent to John, who's the new building inspector, I found out, is he here today?
Is he here?
Hi, John, how are you? Didn't know you'd be here tonight. John, okay, hi. So I do have an email to go out to you, just to see whether or not I am affected by the sewer moratorium that may come, or whether or not I can receive this exemption, based on the fact that I do have a survey that's been prepared, I did have a perk test prepared, and I'm ready to go, and would like to submit an application again and be considered for, you know, moving forward. Thank you. Is there any questions?
No. No, any questions from the board? No? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else in row one? Row two. Anyone in row two wishing to speak on this? Going to row three.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lisa Melendez, I'm a resident of Highland Mills, and I just wanted to briefly submit my comments for consideration, and that is, as a resident, I am not so confident that the implication that there is space for more sewage, or more stress on our already overextended infrastructure, is a mindset that we should employ. Why should our infrastructure be at that capacity? Why do we have to be at capacity? Why do we have to accommodate when our infrastructure at this time is not prepared to accommodate at the level that the county wants us to accommodate, that personal developers want us to accommodate? As residents, I want to flush my toilet, and I want it to function. Basic. And to imply that because there may be, maybe a little bit more left, that we are not at capacity with our sewage, and that's a reason why we should approve and exempt projects, development projects in our town, is not enough. Because ultimately, when things do go awry, the residents are the ones that are going to suffer, not the people that are looking to make money. Now, if you were to tell me, if you were to tell me, as a resident, no, we want to make sure that the town has enough infrastructure, we want to make sure that there's sewage, we don't want, we don't want you guys to be at capacity. We want you to have sufficient sewage. We want everyone to live in a place where they can flush a toilet and it functions, where they can open the tap and there's water. So to stand here and tell us, we're going to sue you guys because you're not at capacity, because we want to make money, because we invested money in this town. Well, you should have done your homework before you came here and purchased the property to begin with. And you should have listened to the residents, because we don't want more development, we want improvement. We want a better quality of life, not just for the residents of Woodbury, not just for a select few, we want it for everyone that's here already, everyone that is here already. That includes the Hasidim, that includes my family, that includes my neighbors, has nothing to do with anything else but quality of life. So when you come to Woodbury and you want to develop, and you're upset because we are putting the brakes on it, and then the county comes and says, well, if you don't do what we want, we'll sue you, I mean, you know, you'll open yourself up to litigation, and then you're on the other side saying, well, if you don't exempt us, then we'll sue you. Where does that leave the residents? Paying for lawsuits out of our pockets? It's very upsetting. Our town is between a rock and a hard place. I would suggest that there needs to be more conversations, there needs to be a face-to-face conversation with Steve Newhouse, with our county executive. Okay? Small towns are not to be pushed around because they're small. Don't let the size fool you. We are here, we are listening, and we're paying attention. I'm not so concerned about your investment, I'm concerned about my life, my quality of life, for my family and for my neighbors, all of them. So however you need this community to respond, you make sure you call upon us, because we will show up, and we will be there, and we will lend our voices. Let's be clear, Woodbury may be 13,000 strong, but we are fierce. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Just anyone coming to the podium, just direct your comments towards the board. Okay, moving forward. I will like to note for the record that we received comments today from Martha Lopez. She drafted a letter that was sent in, and also M&amp;L and Y&amp;D Incorporated for Tim Betrayal Project submitted written comments. So, moving on to the next row. One, two, three, four. Row four. Row five. Anybody? You're already spoken. You want to go back up? Okay, wait. Yep, one second.
Susan McConnell, resident of Highland Mills. I don't have the money to sue. I don't have $4 million invested. I don't work for Woodbury Commons. I'm a small homeowner in Woodbury. I pay my taxes. I want to have the same quality of life that everyone else has. I sat here at the last meeting and listened to someone from the union come up and speak about the jobs lost to the union if Woodbury Commons could not build because of a sewer moratorium. My question to the union would be, how many of your members pay taxes in Woodbury? I would look at Woodbury Commons and they say that we're losing jobs because we can't expand. There's not a store in Woodbury Commons that's got full staff right now. Every single store will hire right now. So I'm pretty sure that even if we don't expand at Woodbury Commons, there's still going to be jobs in there. This is not only a Woodbury problem, this is a county problem. Woodbury is being asked to pause, to lead the way for the other towns and communities, set the example. Let everyone know that we are not stopping development, but we are trying to develop sustainably. And maybe the threat of suing should go to the county, because the county is the one that is continuing to leave the people without infrastructure that has grown at the same rate as the towns. So while people will come here and threaten you, I'd ask you to just pause, and that's what a moratorium is, a pause, a time to reflect and gather more information to see where we need to support our infrastructure, and how can we support the infrastructure? So when you're making your decision, I don't only want you to think about the people who have money, because as a lot of people in New York State, money talks. I don't have the money, and I don't want to move. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead. Ladies first. There was somebody, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so quick, hi. So again, my name is Libra Bank, and I have been a Monroe-Woodbury resident since I was born in 1968, just for whatever that's worth. And so the property that I have, as I mentioned, as I've heard tonight, I too really want quality of life for sure, and I want that for my family and for others. And I am here because wanting to know what is happening with the sewer moratorium, because I have property that has created the hardship. But my question is whether or not, well, from, whether or not the moratorium on the sewer and sewage, and the moratorium on the water, whether or not that affects me if I am able to put a well and a septic, that's my big, that's my question.
That came out really quick. Almost dropped the mic before even talking. You would be able to put in septic.
Okay.
I think the property that you have right now, though, I could be thinking of a different address, but is actually not located within the sewer district, so your option is septic. But you can talk to the building department about that.
Okay.
The well, I'd have to look back at the moratorium. Did I say that wrong? Okay. Okay.
Is Woodbury Road on water? No. Quaker Road? Quaker Road, right?
Quaker Road, Evan Strive, Quakers Road. Quaker Road.
But the water moratorium is drafted different, so.
Are you down past Evan's?
I am just so when the road splits.
I'm sorry. I have a copy next to her. I have to shake my hands.
No, no, I don't want to talk about the water moratorium, actually, because that's a separate issue.
Figuring out whether you're in a sewer.
Okay. So it's, so you would be on septic, you would not be subject to the sewer moratorium for the water moratorium? We're not going to talk about that tonight, because I'd have to look into it.
Okay, great. Okay, good. Thank you. Perfect.
James Johanneman, live up on Regina. Been a resident of Woodbury since 1977. And it's a shame that I haven't really participated or really come to these meetings in all this time, but things have kind of gotten heated enough to come and be interested. Things went along very smoothly for a very long time since I was here. What's interesting here tonight is I hear two different arguments. One, that I think that the attorney has a very, very solid position. It sounds to me, on my layman's terms, my business document tells me it's a very, very fair position. And I understand what the residents are talking about as far as maintaining a sustainable quality of life. I think that the problem probably arose 10 to 20 years ago. The horse got out of the barn and caused the problem that we have today, that we should have had better planning that didn't tax the resources that we have. But that being said, what does the moratorium, I want to get a little bit more on a solution-based path, what does the moratorium do? It stops construction right now for a while, but what's going to happen? How long is the moratorium for? Two years? Is that the plan?
Two years is the issue.
What's going to happen during two years? You going to build another sewer plant? Is that in the plans?
No. The county, we're waiting on the county. The county is the issue. They control our sewer capacity, so we need them to expand.
That's the action list now. Somebody mentioned the county executive. I don't know if it's the county executive or legislature. Is there any action being proposed, initiated to do that now?
By the county to expand? Yes. And they anticipate that to be completed within about four years.
Four years? So a two-year term is going to do us any good?
Well, we wanted to put it in for two years so that we could check the status after those two years and see where everything is.
And anyone that comes in now for approval of any development is going to be denied approval of development or any, you can't build anything right now. There's a moratorium on stuff that's already in progress. That's kind of a shame. But anything else that comes to the floor will not be approved, period? No more development?
I think you'd have to look at the terms of the sewer moratorium. So there's certain properties that contribute to this sewer district and there's certain properties that don't. So if you have a property that's within the consolidated sewer area, that drains Orange County Sewer District Number One, and you don't meet any of the exemptions that are set forth in the draft that the board has before it, then if you don't do that, then you won't be able to do it. If you meet one of those, then you're allowed to continue.
Then if you meet one of the criteria that you're exempt, then you're not causing, you're not contributing to the problem. True?
That's the case if you're not, if you don't meet the requirements.
If you're putting it in septic or whatever, you're not contributing to the problem. So that's not a problem, right? It's just any new development at all that's in an affected area. So we can expect nothing to be approved for the next two years in terms of building in those areas. Nothing. Except what's already under construction, perhaps. Or under, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Felicita Ferrara. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but I made sure I came tonight even though I had parent-teacher conferences. I had to park all the way by the church because there's no parking, which says that enough people have come out. I would like you, I too have invested in this community. I've been here for 18 years. I am a Monroe Woodbury teacher. So I am invested and I don't take sides on if I'm the outlet or whoever it is. I just want to have a quality of life for my family, for my daughters that I'm trying to stay in this community. I'm hoping that we can graduate from Monroe Woodbury. I can't say I can really believe that. We have a soccer team of girls that are bonded and I wish I can say that they're going to win the championship in high school, but I don't know if we're all going to last here. And while I'm here, I'd like to have the quality of life and I'd like you to really take this pause. And I like that you're looking into and learning from our mistakes in the past if we haven't looked into the constant building and the effects it's going to have. Not only for my family, but for my children's friends and for all of my students that I see coming through my doors. I may have them when they're kindergartners, but I see them all throughout the community as 17-year-olds, 18-year-olds, and now 22-year-olds and 23-year-olds. And it's a smile on my face when I see them and I see that they're successful. And most of my students will be employees of Monroe Woodbury Outlets and all these other places. And I do want to see infrastructure built, but not at the cost of our children, not at the cost of my life. I love that we have all this attention here. I wish there was more attention to the fact that the traffic that the outlets are causing and the poor child who got hit by a car, I wish that would have been addressed more and I wish that would have been brought up. And I will bring that up when I come back for open comments again, because these are our children. These are our children who are crossing these roads and going to work in the outlets. And just as important as I, I'm passionate about that, I'm passionate that you take a pause, because I plan on being here. I want my children to be here. I want their friends to be here. I want all my students to still be able to stay in this place and call it their home. I came here from New York City for a better life. I can say for 18 years I've had that. I want to continue that in this town. I came here to live in a town. I moved away from a city. I don't want a city. If I wanted a city, I'd go back to New York City. Thank you.
Thank you.
So what I did not argue even remotely was that you should stop this moratorium with respect to projects that are proposed. I never said anything about that. And to those people, and I respect it, who are concerned about quality of life, sure. You don't want to have overdevelopment, I understand that. And that's a perfectly legitimate thing for this board and the planning board to consider. It is different when you have a project that was approved starting in 2006. That property owner has a right to complete his project and he's not doing anything wrong and he's not contributing to the deleterious devolution of this community. He's not doing anything harmful. As a matter of fact, he's complying with all the laws, including to make sure that the sewage goes into a sewage treatment plant so that everybody can flush their toilets the right way. And no disagreement with that at all. Respect that completely. That doesn't mean that a property owner who has approvals and is building in reliance on those approvals is the devil, is doing something wrong, is, should be castigated and treated as if they're doing something immoral or ruining the community. They are not. They're just building according to the approvals that they have. They have that right. It is still America. You have the right to build when you've been given a property right and an approval. And nobody who has that right should be treated as if they are ruining a community when they're simply doing what they were approved and allowed to do. Went through the planning board process, went through all the review processes, all the conditions are being complied with. So there should be respect for that, not criticism of that, not treating somebody like that like they're a villain, because they're not. On the other hand, the people who claim that they want to have good quality of life should be respected as well. And I would be speaking hypocritically if I turned around and I said, "Oh, well, wait a minute. Let everybody come in who's got a project that they want to build." That's why I said, even though I understand that Woodbury Commons, you can debate whether it's good or bad, you can talk about the union and everything else, my only point was don't put any proposed development in front of somebody who's already been approved. That's all I'm saying. And I'm going to repeat, because people seem to think that I'm threatening. I began by saying, "I don't want to sue you." I don't. I really don't. I make money when I sue you. I don't want to make that money. Please, okay? Neither does Cal. Okay? So that's the plea that I am making here today. And I agree, by the way, that the focus should be on the county. I honestly don't know who dropped the ball. I don't know why there wasn't metering. Wasn't my client's fault. I don't know why it didn't happen. But I got to say this, there's responsibility, I hate to say it this way, probably on both houses. The village should have known what it was using, what kind of capacity of its volume it was using. And the county ought to have said, "Listen, we should know too." So if my client is innocent and the county should have known and the village should have known, then get together, figure it out, work it out, and please let my client who has done nothing wrong finish his project. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Hi, Craig Brady, 39-year resident of Highland Mills. And unfortunately, this is not the first rodeo with Orange County Sewer District Number One. They have had opportunities with a variety of factors in all the years that I've lived here. There was a sewer expansion that was done, I won't quote the year because I don't know it. And to me, this is squarely on Orange County and their lack of planning or, I will hesitate to say it, but I'll say it anyway, potential misappropriation of capacity. So the reality is that you're, as someone said, between a rock and a hard place, because there will be most certainly lawsuits. And if you don't do anything, as I'm sure you've heard from your water and sewer expert many times, there will be lawsuits if there are issues downstream and it pollutes the river, the Arapahoe River, right? So it's like, do you want to be sued by local developers in Orange County or do you want to be sued by Bergen County? To me, I think that the suggestion of and potentially having an open house where residents could meet with Orange County Sewer District people as well as potentially the county executive, the legislature, whomever, to voice these opinions and explain that, "We don't want to do this, but you're not giving us any choice." They've abrogated their responsibility. They need to step up to the plate and make it happen. That's all. Thank you.
I will say, just for the record, we have had two meetings with the county and Kelly Norton has been in constant contact with the county on this issue. And here comes Craig Brady right back. There you go. Now, I got nothing, I mean, honestly. What he's talked about is that.
So I have one further comment. One of the things that would help, I think, the community is to understand actual numbers. I'm a facts guy, everybody knows, everybody knows me knows that I'm a hard numbers guy. I develop numbers and I want to see numbers. What's the capacity of the plant? What is it actually at? What is it actually at for each of the communities that it serves? And what is the planned activity that is going on in each of those municipalities? In other words, you can't have anything, you can't base any decisions unless you have hard facts. So we need the facts and they should be published. They should be publicly available. I'll foil them if I need to. Let me know.
It is election year. She's up for next year. Get her down here.
So it is, Craig, just so you know, we are, it's a good suggestion. That's something we can push forward with. I have had no contact with the county exec. The meetings that we have had with them have been with those that handle sewer and their attorneys. So there has been no interaction with the county exec nor any of the representatives of your county legislation here. So we've had no meetings with them as well. They've not reached out to us, though I thought this was a hot-button topic as a historic sewer moratorium. These things don't happen every day, but apparently, no. So anyway, that's, go ahead, Chris.
Chris Grazian, Highland Mills. I got, I'm going to speak purely from a professional standpoint here tonight. Couple things. I have a suggestion that the board may want to consider is maybe reaching out to the county and instead of the county trying to force you to make an exemption on your sewer allocation for any specific project, have the county create their own allocation for a project that size and potentially have it separate from Woodbury and not impact, not impact Woodbury's allocation.
Have you tried that suggestion?
Yes.
And it is something that is continuously, we've been down and taken over.
That should be what happens. It shouldn't come out of Woodbury's allocation and it wouldn't, and then there would be what you need for the village. Second, just from a perspective of you do not want to play games at all ever with sewer, and not mess with numbers for sewer, because if you make a mistake or you cut it too close, once the sewer, sewer works on gravity. Sewer's not water. Sewer, it doesn't dry up. It comes backwards. If there's nowhere for it to go, it hits a wall and comes back. So you don't want to make a mistake in that regard, because it could have really dangerous consequences. And two, the discharge from that plant is to head it around the river, which provides drink, one-third of the drinking water for 300,000 Rockland residents. So you don't want to mess with the discharge from that plant either and overflow the plant with raw sewage, because that risks the water supply downstream for 300,000 people. So there's things that you have to take into account while you're looking at this from just a technical perspective of make sure, like Craig Brady just said, make sure of your numbers. Make sure what the numbers are, make sure what the capacity is, make sure what the usage is, and double and triple check those numbers. Because that is what will determine for real what's going to happen, not what people feel should happen, not what people think may happen. It's a black and white, it's a numbers issue. And again, I'll, as I always do, if you need anything or you want me to help you with anything, I will do it as a resident for the rest of the residents on a volunteer basis. So let me know. Thank you.
We should say that the residents are not at risk of having a backup into their homes from this right now. I don't want people to be concerned.
We'll get to that. Nobody has actually said that, so. Take care, Jimmy. Thanks for coming out, Jimmy. You brought a bag with you?
Yeah, no, it goes everywhere.
There's samples in there? There's no sewer, right?
Jimmy Ng, Highland Mills. So as far as your presentation, tremendous. We've had a lot of attorneys and I almost, and I understand your position, I understand the position of your client. But as a resident of this area, if you're here and you just look around, and I understand, I understand the investment, and the same way, you know what? If I invest in a stock, I want to make money, but there's no guarantees I'm going to make money. I understand the hardships. I understand if they're going to grant, if you're telling me that your claim here is, if they're going to grant any type of development, any type of capacity, releasing any type of capacity, it should go to your client, I agree with you. He's waited long enough. As far as Woodbury Commons came in here, they came in with a couple of union members and hey, we need to make money. And it just didn't resonate, okay? As far as everyone here is, you know, it's like, really? We all live in Woodbury. I know the residents that live in Woodbury. Everyone else coming here making claims that, you know what, we should do this, release whatever, because, you know, an investment, this and that, you know what? At the end of the day, it's too bad. This was my vision. I like flushing the toilet, I like being whatever, but you're going to put us in position where this is the back, this is a potty. Every home in Woodbury is going to require one, because if we push that capacity, what are you going to do? I can't flush. This is what we do. So for any of these developers or anybody representing- So for any of these developers, or anybody representing a developer or development, to say, I should be allowed, you know what, you start using one of these in your homes, and then we talk. As far as Lisa, I was waiting until later. I didn't want to talk about the election, I didn't want to talk about the Woodbury resident block. Well, we stood up against, you know, the developments and all this, all the nonsense, because it was affecting our quality of life. As far as, Greg, you're right, I don't know what the numbers are. I wish there was better planning that, that was done, but it was not with this board. But the problem is, we have all these areas that we see. We're seeing it in Monroe, South Blooming Grove, and all, on and on and on. I mean, I'm sure you're familiar with South Blooming Grove, as far as, they are over capacity in every instance. You know, they, you have several areas just releasing untreated sewage into, what is it, the Ramapo? You have several areas, it's trucking in water. So at the end of the day, you say that, you know, you were granted approvals and all these studies. Well, studies don't always give you the real story. The real story is the residents living in Woodbury, day in, day out. Where we're told, you know what, there's no, no watering. Imagine, what, what are you gonna call that? No flushing alert? I mean, is, is that, I mean, is that a code, red, brown, whatever? I mean, it, it, this is, I cannot even believe.
You haven't gotten that far yet.
Okay. But this is where we're going. And for, I know that Greg lives in Woodbury, I know who lives here. And for them to show up is wonderful. The residents showing up is, we're active, we're engaged, we're interested. But for all the other outsiders, and that's what you are to me, outsiders coming in to tell me, in my air, my investment, not your investment, you have, your client is able to absorb a loss, to write it off. What am I gonna write off? Tell me that. Whatever my home is worth, it's gonna be worth half if I lose sewer or water, whatever else we're talking about. Do you care? I mean, seriously. This is a new board, and that's why we made an effort. The Woodbury resident block made sure that these two were reelected, because that this board started imposing these moratoriums, unfair or not to the developers. Well, the developers are running us into the ground, like they've tried to run all these other areas into the ground and not care. And for you to come up here and threaten lawsuits and everything else, I mean, I wish you lived here. I wish you understand what, you got people here, like 10, 20, people grown up, like you've been here forever. A lot of people have been here forever. But somebody tell you that, and I understand your situation. But for some, imagine somebody coming, tell you, you have to allow this in your area, because this man needs to make a profit? I just want, I just want to raise my kids here. That's all it's about. Put yourself in our shoes. Because whatever they vote, they're speaking for us because they listen to us. At the end of the day, our, your issue, Woodbury Commons issue, is not with this board. This board is trying to do something because the county. Where is Steve Newhouse? I know there's other issues going on, but seriously, why is Steve Newhouse not here? If Steve Newhouse is gonna stand in front of this board and saying, Mr. Mayor, the board, you have to approve this, so be it. We will take full liability for whatever happens. Okay. But they come in with these recommendations on black and white paper, and here's a study? We've seen plenty of studies. Steve, how did that study help you when that floodwater ran in? I mean, studies are meaningless.
Would you address the board, please?
I'm sorry, would I like to speak to you? I don't even know whether you're paying attention, okay? But, but at the end of the day is, whatever. Your time's coming.
Finish, finish.
But at the end of the day, it's about the residents, okay? The develops or whatever else, I mean, if you, if you could wait, it's four years before they finish construction for the county. I mean, you've waited this long. Is four years too much to ask these developers to wait? I mean, the more, as far as the moratorium, you might have to kick, kick the can down the road. It really is. You can't vote yes or no, because we really don't have the answers. But approving developments is tough. Because the, the residents spoke up, they said what, you know, their, their votes counted. They don't want to see the developments. The grandfathered ones, I don't know what, you know what, they, somebody made a mistake. It wasn't this board, 2006 whoever's sitting there, we can't, we can't pull them back on the board and hold them, hold them accountable. But at the end of the day, the Woodbury residents are fighting for this community. And they're counting on this board to do the right thing.
Thank you, James. And thank you for being, go ahead. Thank you for bringing props. No, it's a toilet.
Rhonda Fabro, 55-year resident. I've lived on Pine Hill Road. I live on Scuny Monk Road. I moved here in 1991. There was a sewer moratorium. Does anybody realize that? Maybe not. So.
It was the county sewer moratorium.
Right. So.
It wasn't the village's.
Right. When I bought my house on Scuny Monk Road, there was a sewer moratorium. And we put in a septic. And while we were there, we were the only house too, by the way, that was built that year, the only house. And back then, when people built houses, the people who actually manufactured and put the houses up, we called them builders, not developers. We didn't fear monger. We didn't tell people that the sewer was going to back up into their homes, which actually, in my case, the septic actually did, into my basement. And it took me two years, but I did get to hook up to the sewer. And where my house is on the Scuny Monk Road, it was actually one of the last houses that would be able to hook up at that time, because of the way that the road was structured and so forth. I feel that it is unfortunate that we're going through this. There was poor planning on the part of the county. I don't feel that it is Woodbury's fault. I don't think that anybody on this board should be persecuted because they have an opinion about this. And when the vote happens, it will be based on information, hopefully, that we've gotten such as numbers and facts. And hopefully, maybe we will have a meeting with our board and the county. And I think that it's upsetting, and I think that people in the audience are upset. But we need to have patience, and we need to have respect for the people who are sitting on this board, who are trying to do their jobs and protect our community. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Rhonda. Anyone else? It's all good.
I need to ask a question just out of my ignorance. Does the development?
You admitted, it's good.
I'm good. Is the, the development and KJ participate or contribute to this Orange County Sewer District that we do?
They are within the district.
Yes, within the district, so they're discharging there too?
They are, but we're outside, we're outside users. We contract.
There must be a tremendous amount of reserve for the development that continues there, then, in the sew, in the plant.
I defer to the county sewer operators. But they have to definitely take into account the growth of the municipalities that are located within the district. They get first.
But it's not like, it's not like the plant is going to be overrun in the next two years. Or maybe it will, by, by the development that's happening so rapidly, right?
We're getting additional information for the board, like was suggested, so that the board has very up-to-date numbers.
And it just sounded to me like we're just waiting for the county to, waiting by the phone for the county to call us and say, hey, we see you have a problem. Did we reach out to them and get them in here?
We, we have met with them. Yeah.
So they understand.
Not any of the politico, politicos, if you want to call it that. But we have met with their, their people, their, their legal side. Yeah.
Because the whole solution here seems to be the development of additional sewage capacity. And, and then we can move to the 90% capacity level before we go to a moratorium and stop development or something like that. But we, we have to solve the resource problem, right?
We're trying. We're trying from all angles.
And four years sounds like, I think we have to go to the government for better approvals of, of building. Because it doesn't take four years to build a sewer plant. I've worked on two of them already that were built in less than a year. One right in, in Slotsburg there, and, and one up in Newburgh, the most recent one that was built there on, by the town buildings there, as a sewer addition to the sewer plant that was there, it was built in less than a year.
This is just the information they're giving us. In terms of the timeframe, I, I couldn't tell you where they're at with the project, whether they've developed it, where they've drawn up. I couldn't even tell you.
But that's kind of bad.
All I know is that four to five years is.
That's kind of bad, isn't it, though, that we don't know?
Of course it is. But like I said, my hands are, listen, part of their plan, so people know, they, they're not expanding the, they should be doubling the size of the plant with the growth going on in Orange County. It, it, the growth is, it's exploding. But their plan is to just go up, say, 50%, and I don't think that's suitable. That's just my opinion.
I know, but that.
Because there's so much business coming to Orange County.
I understand that. We don't want to thwart that kind of development that's going to be beneficial to us. Not necessarily overcrowd us, but be beneficial to us. But if we talk about a two-year moratorium, we're just gonna be back in the same bowl of crap two years from now to tell them it's two more years for a plant to be done. I think, my opinion, it might satisfy these investors if you could say, in four years, we'll be ready to approve and let you go. You have to wait an extra two years. Some good news. Do we have a liaison between the, the village and the, and the county who's knocking down the doors?
She has been. She has really been on, this has been, we have a lot going on in the village of Woodbury normally. Local laws, everything else like that. But really, the sewer capacity issues have been all-encompassing for the last, I guess, month, two, it's been weeks. So it, this is not like a new subject, we've talked about it at our meetings. But we're at DEFCON 5 at this point. I don't even know what it's, it's not something we can fix.
No, I understand.
So this is us trying to figure out how we can sort of move forward, and how we can deal with it on our end. So I need the county to do what they need to do. This is really on the backs of them, so.
I feel, I, I'd be volunteering a knock on the door every day at the county office to get, get some action.
All I do is talk about sewage.
Yeah.
That is all I talk about.
That's pretty crappy, you'd have to do all the time.
How much, can I ask you, how much was the Newburgh plan? The new more, the Newburgh, do you remember how much that cost?
Well, I'd have to say, I'm a, I was electrical contractor at the time, bid the project, I didn't, I didn't win it. I think the electrical bid was just north of $2 million, so it's typically about 10% of the project.
That's a lot of Fire Department t-shirts.
I think it's a lot tonight that's good, so that maybe when you get some of these additional facts and additional information, like the numbers are constantly being updated to present something to the students that one time. City or, well, people. Mickey committed so many words with the chart.
He's like looking at.
It was a lot of words.
That's it, talked about sewer.
For an hour and a half.
That's all we talked about. Anyone else wishing to speak? Going once, going twice. Okay, as I mentioned earlier in the meeting, we're gonna have to continue this because we had some changes. So I am thinking about pushing this into the new year, because we've only got the one meeting in December. So, which would also be our reorg meeting. What's that?
Midyear reunion.
Midyear reunion, what happened?
January 9th?
I'll be in a tux as we talk about sewer. So can I have a motion in a second to continue this public hearing to our January 9th, 2025 meeting? Actually, you know what, does the board have any questions for attorney, or any comments they want to make at this time? Sue?
No, I think we need more information, for sure, so.
Yeah.
Five man, trustee.
I'm fine, I'll hold off.
Okay.
Just to let Mr. Brady know, I have the information you want, you happen to share with.
Okay.
This is, this is the current floor report for the Orange County Sewer District.
But he's looking for future planning to that, like, area, so.
I think he was looking for a lot of.
That was one piece, yes.
That's available to you, if you'd like it.
All right, is the board, is the board okay with continuing the public hearing till January 9th, 2024? Can I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
2025, excuse me, that would be great, though, if I could do that, go back in time.
I don't want to resist.
So moved, do I have a second? Do I have a second? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving right along. Public comment on agenda items only. The agenda is absolutely on the small table. If anybody has any questions on the agenda.
This is showing that you're leaving, you're not taking.
All right, guys, guys. Public comment on the agenda. Anything. All right, going once.
Public comment on anything?
Oh, no, agenda items. Yeah, whatever's on the agenda. Going once, going twice. Okay, administrative business. Can I have a motion in a second to accept proceed to the minutes of the meeting held on October 24th, 2024?
I would like to comment on the minutes, if it's all right?
Yeah, but I, let me get the motion in a second.
Just a correction, though? Just submit the correction.
I think they're talking about us out there, so. Anyway, do I, I have a motion from trustee Furelli, or deputy mayor Furelli? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Okay, trustee Fabro, you have comments?
I would just like to clarify for the record and the minutes. It's mostly accurate, but a few little details I wanted to add in on my board comments from the tail end of last meeting. Once again, to clarify, I, nor my family, do not own any stock or any percentage in the Falkirk Golf Course. And the comments that we were talking about were not just on Facebook, they were made in a blog. And this, you misstated the donation. The donation was from a political committee to a endorsed multi-candidate committee. So it was a, it was from the Woodbury Democratic Committee campaign account. It wasn't a personal donation, and it was made to the campaign committee of two candidates who ran in the past election. Thank you.
All right, I have a motion in a second. Do I have an all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Approval of abstract. Village clerk McClain, will you please read abstract 11?
Abstract 11 contains vouchers 24250973 through 24251174, and totals $600,671.29.
I have a motion in a second to prove abstract 11 is read.
All motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, appointment, full-time position, secretary of planning and zoning boards. So can I have a motion in a second to appoint Kristin Sebaston Boyle to the full-time position of secretary of the planning and zoning board of appeals in the building plant with a start date of November 18th, 2024? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Discussion?
Yes.
I'm just trying to clarify. I'm trying to keep track of people moving around, because there was, is this a new hire, or is she moving from one department to another?
No, this is a new hire. This is a new hire.
Thank you.
Is that it? Okay. I have a motion in a second. Do I have an all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All business, rescind motion, Crown Castle proposal upgraded Wi-Fi. So can I have a motion in a second to rescind the motion previously made at the October 10th, 2024 meeting regarding the contract with Crown Castle? Crown Castle was unable to commit to the $850 per month since the town of Woodbury decided not to sign on. The price increased to $1,050 per month without the town. So basically, what we're doing is we are canceling that, and then later on in the meeting, we have another contract to approve to replace that one. So can I have a motion in a second to rescind?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, last meeting, we basically threw out bids. The bid opening was held on November 8th, 2024 at 11:00 a.m. The build, the bid notice was printed in the Times World Record on October 28th, 2024 for the cleaning and televising and sanitary sewers and manhole inspections. The following bids were received. Vortex Services, 23600, no, $236,000. Montana Construction, 112,820. National Water Main Cleaning, 131,124.75. Arrow Construction, 133,000, no, 133,98875. And then finally, Tam Enterprises with $98,222.65. So at the last meeting, we decided to rebid the project. In essence, what we did was save taxpayers roughly about 16 grand by rebidding it. So can I have a motion in a second to award the project to Tam Enterprises at the recommendation from our village engineer, H2M?
Second.
All in favor?
Discussion.
Yes.
I wanted to, to actually submit a statement in regard to this particular process. The rebid demonstrates the benefit, in this case about 20% of the unit cost in pursuing aggressively, multiple-party bidding. But it's notable that the analysis of the variation in unit cost entries indicates that the bid spec was not tightly written, as the unit cost total of all Lewis bids, lowest bids, only comes to 39,000. This work is central to the issue of the sewer connection moratorium, so the lowest bid looks credible, and I recommend it.
Okay, motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Village treasurer. All right, authorize me to sign stuff. So first off, attorney Norton, why don't you tell us what we're doing with the amended Aon agreement?
Yes, so as the board is likely aware, you have an existing developers' agreement with Aon, which is the hotel that is along Estrada Road. This is an amendment to that agreement. It, obviously, it's under construction, it is looking to open, I think probably in the spring, but there's a few items that were required to be constructed that in consultation, really with your highway department, those things are no longer really wanted or needed, and those include like the bus shelters, things like that, and then also making sure that the paving done, is done during a time of year when that works, to, so that may have to be during the spring, although we're having great weather now, but who knows? I don't want to jinx anything. So this, this developers' agreement really changes the timelines for that and then removes those items that were previously required that are no longer really deemed necessary.
All right, thank you, attorney Norton. So now that we've got the 10 cents, or can I have a motion in a second to authorize me to make a, to sign an amended agreement with Aon?
Motion.
Do I have a second? Second, second, all in favor?
A discussion.
Go ahead.
I previously requested information on the reasoning behind the deletion of the original pedestrian safety requirements in the agreement. The improvements originally required a sidewalk connection to the existing walk opposite Bossher Court. This agreement made that construction at the discretion of the village and subject to a determination as to the extent of the public right-of-way, and a bond was to be established. Since this project was originally approved with the walkway, walkway requirement six years ago, why is the issue of the right-of-way not presently resolved? As a frequent pedestrian, i.e. runner along this road, I can attest to the dangerous conditions, both due to the vertical curve in visibility and the lack of shoulders on the road. It shouldn't take six years to survey this stretch of road and make the improvements still necessary for the sake of the hundred or so potential motel guests that are going to be walking to the diner.
So I can respond to part of that, and then I'll turn it over to Rob for anything that he has to add. The sidewalk is still proposed, it's still going to be constructed, and they have submitted a bond in that regard, which is why in this amended agreement, if you see, if it's not built within a certain timeframe, the village can use that bond to build it itself, because the village has found that, and I'm assuming this board continues to find that that sidewalk is important for pedestrians, a lot of people walk there. The issue with the right-of-way, there's actually one lot along there, and there were some issues with the surveys between the surveyors and the engineers for only one lot. So we were trying to work through that, and then the project kind of died and went away for a few years during COVID. It's now been revived, and so the issues are being brought to the forefront so that that pedestrian sidewalk can be constructed.
Thank you for your explanation.
All right, I have a motion in a second. Do I have an all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, new business, authorize me to sign more things. Okay, as previously mentioned, LightPath High-Speed Internet. Can I have a motion in a second to authorize me, the mayor, to sign a contract with LightPath offering high-speed internet at the 850 per month locked in for 60 months, and includes the five static IP addresses we need for the phone system and antivirus software? I could be doing this, all right? It also complies with our cybersecurity requirements from our insurance carrier. So can I have a motion in a second to approve the proposal for LightPath High-Speed Internet?
So moved.
All in favor?
One question, so I noticed it was the same price, what was the reason we switched from the previous folks?
As I previously mentioned, they could not hold the price because the town of Woodbury decided they could not, were not going to sign on with them, and they increased the price to 1050 per month.
Gotcha.
So diligently worked to find us another vendor who was going to match that existing price that we approved, so.
Thank you.
You are great.
All right.
All right, anyway, all right, it's approved. All right, Howlett Common Neuter Agreement. So once again, we're authorizing me to sign stuff. Can I have a motion in a second to authorize me, the mayor, to sign the engineering agreement with the Howlett Common Neuter Project with MHE, MHE Engineering? That's it. Do I have a motion in a second?
Motion.
I'll make the second. Do I have an all in favor?
Discussion.
Okay.
As you did with the issue of the bidding for the construction of the, or essentially the sewer project, the question I have is, did we? My question is, is this the only bid that we had for this particular project?
This is just the engineering firm for the.
You don't go out to bid for professional services, so there's no state requirement to do that for professional services.
So we didn't, so we didn't check with any other engineering firms to?
It's still in design.
No, I understand, I'm just, I'm just saying.
This is the firm that we've been using for the common neuter projects. This is part Phase B. Phase A was pre-you being on the board.
Yes.
It's part of a grant that we got through WIIQ, did I get the letters right? That this particular engineering firm is working with us with, through that grant process and through this project. So it's just part Phase B of the whole entire project. So they were, they were the engineers on Phase A, now they're the engineers on Phase B, because the project requires separate agreements because of the grant.
Thank you.
Am I, am I good to go?
You're good.
You're good.
Okay, I'm going to need a bell or something like that, just let me know when they're, when they're done. All right, anyway, moving right along. Oh, we need a vote. I have a motion in a second. Do I have an all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving right along, resolution, the sales tax. So can I have a motion in a second to adopt the following resolution, electing a direct cash payment be paid to the village, to the village of Woodbury, provided for a New York State Law 1262, Section C, pursuant to the county of Orange Sales and Compensating Use Tax Sharing Agreement dated February 9th, 2023? Do I need to read this entire resolution? Going once, going twice?
You're not required to.
Okay. It was online. All right, so can I have a motion in a second to adopt the, the resolution as presented? Can I have a motion in a second? Is everybody sleeping?
No.
Nap?
Can we discuss about the 80%?
As soon as I get a motion.
Oh, sorry, motion, sorry.
Second. Okay, motion in a second, now discussion.
You want to go first?
You want to start, who wants to start?
Can we, are we facing it?
You got a microphone?
Microphone.
That's what I thought we were doing, was facing it. Okay, is it working? Just talk louder.
Is it working?
Yeah, it is, we're good.
So I think the question was, can we phase it in?
Right, can we phase it in?
So the thought was that this really was phasing it in, and part of, part of this was, I knew that this was coming up on your agenda. I want the board to know that I did notify the town board of this in advance, because I know it's budget season, so for them to have the ability to take that into account in their budget season, so just so the board knows that.
Okay.
Okay.
Whether or not it passed, at least they had that understanding before they passed the budget.
Okay.
So this was, did you say this was phasing it in at 80%?
Well, because you're entitled actually to 100% of it, so this was 80% and still giving them 20.
Okay, because dollar-wise, I think that's, you know.
I have, I have a question, since I, I have been able, unable to find the particular reference to the county sales and compensating use tax sharing agreement, though pieces of it are included in the resolution. I would like to see that, because as I understand it, according to the Comptroller's Office, the payment between the, a town and the village is based on the respective populations or the assessed valuations of the two entities. Is it possible to get a copy of, a full copy of this?
Yes, and I do have a copy of that agreement, and that is accurate. That is why the money that comes in, Harriman gets 100% of theirs, because their population, for their population, and the village has the remainder of the population of the town of Woodbury. There is no population of the town of Woodbury outside either of the villages, which is why you're entitled to 100%.
I was talking about the, between the town and the village.
Yes, there's no piece of the town that is outside the village.
No, no, I understand that, I'm talking about what the town's share of the tax revenue from sales taxes generated essentially within the town.
Is zero, because everything is within the village, which is why you're entitled to 100% outside of that part from, that goes to Harriman. So that goes directly to Harriman, so right now, there's 100%, and you guys have chosen to split it 50/50 in the past, but you're actually entitled to 100% of that because of your location and population, and because the town doesn't exist outside of these two villages.
I understand, but it seems to me that this is essentially a declaration of war since that.
I don't think so, I think that.
Well, because in this instance, if I may, the IMA was negotiated, and the mayor has refused to even meet with the town to go over this issue.
That's not true either, because we did have a meeting scheduled with the supervisor and the councilwoman, Sandy Prigleyone, that they canceled. Okay, we had a meeting scheduled, there was no reason to cancel it. We were told that it was because her dog died, it wasn't because her dog died, so we had a meeting, it then had to become a public spectacle, there's no need for that. So I am just plowing forward, the IMA, in my opinion, is not necessary, it will expire on December 4th, and I am moving ahead. So let's not blame the mayor.
Well, essentially, you're diverting, you're diverting the sales tax revenue from the town's budget into your budget, and that means that the town, to make up the difference, will now tax the, our residents to balance their budget.
Mr. Fryman, you just ran a campaign and election against two of your trustees. You went on about the incredible tax increases that village taxpayers have had to deal with. In the meantime, here I am trying to redirect, because there's no reason to, when the town is handling the senior center and the animal shelter and refuge, departments that are far, far smaller than ours, and we are struggling with having to increase taxes just to pay for infrastructure for the water sewer department. There's no department even close to that in the village of Woodbury, on my roads. Smallest department I have is the building department, and even that is involved. So this was, this should have been done a long time ago, we're addressing it, money should have been redirected to the village of Woodbury. I don't know how else we're supposed to get money, other than through taxes or through more, getting more of the sales tax distribution. So it's better than bonding, right, to pay for our needs on this side of the table, and our needs are far greater with our infrastructure. So I, I, I am mind-blown that this is a problem. I mean, Sue, you have anything you want to add?
Yeah, I think maybe if Kelly can just talk about, on each side of the table, right, the sales tax, and when we have the commons, right, they don't utilize on the town side, right, they don't utilize the library, they don't utilize the senior center, they don't utilize our parks and recreation, right, but on the village side, right, all the expenses, it's almost like, it's kind of, it's imbalanced, right, because they, they don't, the commons doesn't use most of those benefits, but they do utilize the village services, like the fire department, the police department on the other side, they do, they get the bid money.
Yeah, the police department gets the business improvement district money, solely because it's the police department. You do not get any penny from that. That's correct.
Okay.
I have a comment as well, sorry. Cost arguments aside, I don't fully comprehend why we couldn't have just hammered this out in an IMA agreement or a future agreement. I know the town emailed us, it looked like on the 21st of October, saying they'd be open to another work session, like Sue, me, and Jim attended. I know Vic couldn't make it that day, but he mentioned he was open as well. I mean, I don't know. It's, it seems like something we've done for a number of years, and now all of a sudden we're pulling the rug out from under the town. I know there's been, you know, arrows traded back and forth as who's to blame for that disagreement, and I know we have, you're saying we have a legal right to the money. It just seems like maybe you're saying we could phase it in over time gradually, maybe that could be done in an agreement.